Let's come to order, welcome to our work session. Okay, what do you want?
Yeah, we have one thing, one item to add to the agenda. It's in reference to the education jobs budget for two percent bonus. Mr. Samby passed it out. It basically shows what it'll cost to provide a two percent bonus across county. And I guess we get into it in a few minutes.
Okay.
I'd like to add that.
Any other questions or comments on the agenda? Anything on the consent agenda?
You know, just quickly, Mr. Kelly mentioned a moment ago, if you looked at facilities used, there is a new sheriff's department wrestling program that's starting up, right Angel? One of the SROs, I think at Black and the Middle is overseeing that and no cost to the kids. So, you know, we're gonna obviously recommend that you guys let them use that facility for that purpose. And that we do continue that good work.
Is there a lawsuit pending on that matter?
What status that Angel or Jeff, do y'all know Jeff?
Are we being sued at the moment, I guess is the...
Yeah, that one nonprofit organization that Bill Kennedy was involved with is still suing the county and the county school board over that wrestling building, claiming it's their building.
Right, okay, thanks.
That will be going on many more months if there's no resolution to take for that anytime soon.
Okay.
There's not any reason we shouldn't let this group use it?
No, no.
Grant.
Well, I was gonna, well, I guess you probably answered that on that one, but I was gonna, it's not gonna prejudice any us going ahead and doing this, we have to do something in the interim to keep that program going.
Obviously, yes.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Other questions on that or anything else on the consent agenda? I guess that takes us to number nine.
Facility, Kefrona Last Cassus Elementary School sewer system. Thursday night, Jamie Reed, PE from SEC Incorporated will make a brief presentation on proposed upgrades to Kitchell and Last Cassus sewer systems. These upgrades include putting in a sand filter system at each location at a cost of approximately $230,000 each. We currently have 109,000 in capital improvement budget for design and repair for each system. With the SEC Incorporated proposal, we can forego the repairs and put this money towards construction of the new project since a temporary agreement has been reached with the state. And I asked Mr. Clardy to give you an update with respect to exactly what'll be done. And then we'll hear from Mr. Reed on Thursday night.
You may recall approving an agreement with SEC a few months back to evaluate and redesign sewer systems for both Last Cassus and Kitchell. The existing systems receive the waste and the solids are stored and the liquid are treated and released into the stream. Well, those, both sewer systems are in horrible shape. They've been there for 18 years, I think, and the steel is corroded, it's just falling apart, it's coming apart in, you know, layers. So, instead of replacing those systems and spending or repairing, we decided that it would be beneficial to put in step systems in those two areas instead of just putting the money in so we'd have the same problem again or someone else would be faced with it. The proposal called for, out at Last Cassus, putting in a step system if we have adequate soil on that site. That site's a fairly small site. If not, we would pipe that across the road to the Farmington subdivision and add some onto the existing system there and treat that sewer at that way. Kitchell, of course, the system, there's plenty of room to put that in out there. And there also would be room to expand that existing system at that point if another school was added out there at some point in years to come because it'll be a long time before there's ever any sewer service out at Kitchell. So, in the narrative that Mr. Gill read, we had put some money in the capital improvements budget this year to invest in the existing systems and try to repair them and get them fixed up so the state would get off their back about those two. Since we've gone into the mode of designing and taking a look at this, the state said, "We will work with you and let you, you just give us a plan of how you're gonna do that." So, I would expect we'd have two to four years to get these both accomplished. We have the approximately $200,000 left in capital improvements after, for those two systems, after the engineering comes out. So, what I would have been thinking is that we could take that 200,000 next year, put a few thousand with it and get one of them done. And then the following year, out of capital improvements, do the other one. So, that's my thinking and I'll take questions if you have them.
Okay, Grant.
On the agreement with Farmington, how would that, how would that work on that? You talking about actually using their system?
Yes, use their system, just tight line that, fourth main, across the highway, board the highway, go down there and put our effluent into their system. And if required, we would add on to their system down there a little bit to accept our daily flow.
Well, that's what I was asking about, they would have to expand, possibly expand if they did. What would be our cost there?
It would be in the neighborhood of $230,000 for the entire thing.
Do you rank Last Cassus above Kitchell as far as what needs to happen first?
Not really, either one of them, they're both put in at the same time. They've both had damage to them pretty much the same way, so. And as long as we submit to the state what we're going to do, I don't think they care. So, either one of them would be appropriate to start on.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you Gary. So, Thursday we'll hear from someone from SEC.
Jamie Reed from SEC. And then, as we get a little bit closer, I'll bring a motion back to proceed with construction as we get a little closer.
Thanks.
Hi, Dr. Mertesacker.
Do your amendment?
Yes, sir. Financial matters. In front of you, you've got a two-sheep breakdown on education jobs budget for two percent bonus. And what that does, it reflects how that two percent will be spent with regards to teachers, classified, alternative schools, so on and so forth. Total is at $3,756,945 in just a second. I have another amendment that basically requests an additional $220,000 for what we can't spend on the education jobs amendment. So, what I'm recommending is that the education jobs federal project budget covers the two percent bonus approved by the board for staff in the schools. Bonus for the system-wide staff are covered by the GPS school budget amendment. This budget totals $3,756,945 and covers the bonuses, social security, retirement, Medicare for these bonuses. And that's coming from the federal education job bill. And I recommend that you approve the education job project fund for $3,756,945 to fund the two percent bonus approved by the board for staff in the schools as presented. And that's what we discussed last month or two months ago. And that money has to be spent pretty much either this way or some kind of incentives.
Okay, questions on that?
Let me make sure I understand this. The jobs money cannot be spent on someone that is not directly related to the teaching of students. And this is administrative positions here, central office?
Yes, sir, that's pretty much it. System-wide positions, so to speak. Me, Jeff, Joyce, Ms. Barnes, all the folks down here, right? Pretty much Jeff?
Yes, sir.
And they're covered in the, what we'll discuss in just a second.
The three million 756,000 that we have right here in this amendment, this is for all of the student-related positions, right? It's the 200,000 that we discuss next that's...
Well, I mean, I get, you could say that, of course, we all consider ourselves student-related. But, yeah, I guess the specifies as part of that funding bill that they have to be directly involved in classroom or instruction or in some capacity.
In the schools.
In the schools, yeah.
Even cafeteria staff in the schools is accepted.
Yeah.
So, this 3.7 million is the federal money?
Yes.
That we made a decision that it wasn't prudent for us to hire new positions because it's one-time money.
Right.
And so, instead, we said, "We haven't increased pay for folks and such." And so, we're gonna use it in a bonus structure because it's one-time money.
Yes.
One-time payout, one-time pay-in. And this 3.7 is really no impact to the taxpayers in Rutherford County.
Correct.
Outside of their federal liabilities.
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Any, everybody clear on what we're doing here? Other questions or discussion? Really on that or on A, right? I mean, A is the counterpart, right?
Right.
I'll let you read it, let me make sure to go to God.
Just turn to you, say about the two percent.
Okay.
Do we vote on it? Do we vote on this one?
Not tonight.
Thursday.
Okay. I first started out thinking, I said, "Good morning, Ms. Tekken, Mr. Blair," now I'm... Okay, number 10A.
You know what year is it?
2011.
It's the humidity, not the heat.
General purpose school budget amendment for two percent bonus. The two percent bonus is for administrative and system-wide staff need to be funded from the GPS school fund and not the education job grant the system has received. $85,673 is needed for the certified staff and $116,687 for classified staff in these positions. This amendment allocates $220,891 in already budgeted certified and classified salaries and the related benefits to the necessary certified and classified lines in order to fund the bonus approved by the board and the REA. And we're obviously gonna recommend that you do that.
Okay. Discussion on that? Let's go to B.
Educational capital projects fund 177 budget amendment. Fund 177, education capital projects, each year an amendment must be done to fund again the previous year's projects that weren't complete on June 30th. The purchase orders in this fund are not carried forward to the next fiscal year. Following 2009, 2010 projects are included in the carryover amendment. McFadden renovation, architect fee $1,020, maintenance and repair $3,044. Roof repair replacement, Riverdale Annex $3,835. Riverdale band section $26,682. Christiana hallway $280. HVAC replacement, Laverne High School $337,289. Riverdale High School $127,500. Oakland High School $127,500. Holloway High School window replacement $170,000. Total funds to be amended from the fund balance $797,150. The rest of this amendment reallocate $60,000 of already budgeted contract services to the line items that best fit the description of the service. No new funds are being used. Other contracted services, $68,000. Architect fees for Central Magnet School grease trap project, budgeted projects, $10,000. Engineering services for the Kitchell and Last Cassus wastewater treatment project, $58,000. Window replacement campus school, $8,520. Roofing, steward's bar, $15,000. And McFadden renovation, $81,500. And we recommend that you amend $797,150 from fund balance for prior year projects into amend that $68,000 contract service to other line items as presented.
Okay, discussion.
The Oakland Riverdale HVACs, are those the annex? Is that in annex buildings or where are they located?
Yes, the old.
Yeah.
For the sake of accuracy, is it appropriate to express the $68,000 as $76,520? Because there's also the 8,500 that's coming back from the window replacement?
Jeff?
Not in the way we take the amendment forward.
That's okay, no problem.
Okay, other discussion? All right, number 11.
Vice policies first reading. Policy 1.602, the purpose of revision is clarify that membership, composition, responsibilities of committees authorized by the board, including the policy advisory committee, will be defined by the chairman of the board and may be changed at his or her discretion. B, policy 1.108 nepotism. Policy 5.102, support personnel. Policy 5.115, assignment transfer. Purpose of revision is correct conflicting language regarding who has the authority to approve the hiring of immediate family members within the same school building and to add stepparents and stepchildren to the definition of immediate family. C, policy 1.802, section 504 and ADA grievance procedures. Purpose of revision is eliminate the language under the complaint and process hearing and add language stating the hearings will be conducted pursuant to current procedures and to give the director the authority to appoint an employee to act as 504 and ADA coordinator. D, policy 5.108, supervision purposes to establish a policy requiring employees to report being charged with any criminal offense within 72 hours. Policy 6.313, discipline proceedings. Policy 6.309, zero tolerance offenses. Purpose of revision is to add bullying regardless of method used and possession, creation or transmission material considered to be obscene as level-one misbehaviors and add sexual misconduct resulting in the student being criminally charged with sexual battery, sexual assault, indecent exposure, rape or aggravated sexual battery as a zero tolerance offense. Policy 4.7, testing programs. Purpose of revision to adopt a policy regarding percentages for standardized testing pursuant to state law. G, policy 5.304, long-term leaves of absences for professional personnel. Purpose is to allow only medical leaves to be extended by the director of schools. H, policy 6.503, homeless students. Purpose of the revision is to add language required by federal auditors. And we recommend that you approve all those revisions in first reading.
Okay, as you remember last, before Christmas, I think we had our policy committee meeting and whatever all this, and if you need a reminder of the text, it's there under the tab. Grant?
On G there, talking about to allow only medical leaves to be extended by the director of school. What, how had it been having previously on that?
I think that's had, Angel?
The only reason that we added that was because that policy on leaves contains several different kinds of leaves.
Right.
Including childcare leave. And once those requests are submitted, we don't allow them to be changed because we're hiring interns in physicians to fill for those leaves. But a medical leave, if an employee were to present a doctor's statement at the end of the leave saying they could not return, would need to be able to be extended, whereas the other leaves would not.
This will be able to respond immediately to that too, obviously.
So, it just clarifies that only medical can be extended beyond its original date.
Other questions? Speaking of policy, we have our monthly list of policies to review. So, please take a look at those. Which brings us to general discussion. Okay, Wayne?
I think it might be appropriate at this point in time. We all got a couple of emails concerning snow days and how difficult that is. I think it might be worthy of just explaining that. A question was raised, did I support those things? And I do support the way it's done, I think it's been done appropriately, but I think it'd be worth explaining.
That's a good idea.
First of all, the kind of protocol from our perspective is we try to scout. As a matter of fact, over the course of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I rode a couple hundred miles where the roads, the snail gets out, we sent out correspondence to bus drivers, give them an opportunity to have input. And ultimately make some kind of decision. Obviously, decisions driven by safety. One of the things I've said during my tenure here, it, you know, we wanna get kids there safe, obviously. But we hear it from both sides. When we don't send them, people are furious that they weren't sent. And when we do send them, they're furious because we did send them. But in this particular case, we basically hit all roads. There were very few patches of ice. We connected with the bus drivers, we advised if they felt at all concern on any road, "Don't use that road." Now, one could argue, well, it was Friday, the last day of the week, we had off Monday too. But, you know, I value each day we can get a kid to school and have instruction. Furthermore, I've thought and said for some time, you know, when we get them there, they're a whole lot safer than they are at home when their parents have to go to work and leave kids behind. You know, we got the case down in Bedford County, pardon me, Maury County, where a 12 and 10-year-old were cleaning guns, one of them shot the other. You know, I've heard, you hear of people having accidents on four-wheelers or sledding accidents or others. So, we try to get them there, we don't want to ever jeopardize their safety. And we felt really good. The last question I asked Mr. Snell, I said, "Are you confident that every bus can get there without any kind of issue?" And he said, "I am," and we did. We made it without exception. So, you know, it's always a tough call. And we try to, we try to do what's, what's right and what's best for kids.
Grant?
We didn't have any incidents, anything related to weather on that particular day, did we?
No, no.
I was thinking.
Actually, we got multiple emails on Thursday, kind of chastising us for not sending them, sending them that day. And then we got multiple on Friday for sending them, so, you know.
Anything else on the snow? I'm just glad that we have enough days built into our calendar. I saw Metro's already out of snow days. We have 10 or 11, I saw it.
We had 13 to begin with, we dedicated two for professional development, which left us with 11, and we're down to six. And like you say, Montgomery and Metro and a few others are already out of, out of days. We still have six.
Okay. Wayne?
Yes, sir, would like to maybe talk about the director of schools evaluation, which we're required to do each year. The, what we've done in the past is this 12-page, I don't know what to call it, I just haven't been very happy with it. And would like to ask the board to consider maybe going to a little more simplified form, maybe using four core areas and writing a narrative and then expanding on the evaluations that a particular board member desires. And at the end of the, of the narrative, you know, give the director, you know, you know, a score, if you will. And I think this, this has been kind of arduous in the past and I don't know that, a little more simpler program. And I'll present to some, a core suggestion, but the board can decide what it would like to do. I did, I did discuss this with, with Mr. Reed to make sure that, you know, we, we were on the right page and hope the board would, would consider making this a little more simplified. But I think it can still be adequate in detail, you know, with the narrative for each, with each core area.
So, you wanna move from multiple choice to SA?
Well, okay. I, I think, I think the narrative could be, you know, could be, could explain our, you know, basically our evaluation better than trying to write one, four, or five, you know, so.
Let me just say for the benefit of our newer members that, I don't know, the first year or two that set four of us, I guess, were on the board, we had something similar to this, Wayne. Now, there was no written part, but it was, it was a one-pager which had about four or five dimensions on it. And then we decided that wasn't quite getting it. Now, there was no, I don't think there was any writing, I don't recall writing anything. And so, then we just looked around and we looked at a bunch of different evaluations from systems really across the state, I think. I don't remember, I just remember it was a bunch, and this is what we came up with. So, there's nothing magical about this particular instrument. It's just the one that, at the time, we thought did the best job of capturing all the dimensions of, of being director of schools. So, certainly the board's prerogative to change it if it wants to. I think we wanna make some decision on it. We don't have to decide tonight or even Thursday, but I don't think we want to drag this out too long. So, yeah. Grant?
Either way, when would it be due?
Well, I was thinking mid-February, February 15th is the date that Joyce and I had kicked around.
We couldn't do it on Valentine's Day and show the love.
If you feel strongly about that, Wayne, you'd be welcome to do that.
We have a board meeting the week of 15th and 16th. That's the reason you were kind of looking to the middle of that, on, on, before that date?
Well, the, I don't know if we were quite that logical about it. The one thing to keep in mind is that, that this is really separate from the discussion of an extension. And by law, we've got to give 15 days notice, public notice, before we vote on any extension. So, I mean, that's another thing we have to decide. Assuming we want to, to have such a vote, we'll need to make sure to put it on at least 15 days in advance. So, I just think it's cleaner if we do this first and not combine this explicitly with saying exactly what you're gonna do on the extension. Yeah, are they connected? I think they are. That's the whole idea of doing an evaluation, is you don't make a decision about an extension until you've done an evaluation. But they're technically, I think, two separate processes. If I've mangled that, anybody, please let me know. But, so I think right now what we have to decide is, you wanna do this instrument? Do you wanna do something along lines of what Wayne has said? Or do you wanna do something totally different? And I'm certainly open to suggestions. But at some point, fairly soon, we need to make a decision. I would...
Well, I've never, I've never dealt with either one. But my, my experience from, from my, from my standpoint of evaluation period, I would, I would prefer the narrative format as opposed to this checklist, what I've seen. But I've not dealt with either one, so I can't say that I oppose it and I would be glad to work with either one. But I would, I think I would prefer more of this, what Wayne has as opposed to what the other model that I see.
Okay. Other thoughts?
One of the things, one of the things that I'm hoping to come from our February 12th planning meeting are some specific expectations. planning meeting are some specific expectations that make it easier, you know, to say over the last twelve months, because according to policy, the, you know, even though we haven't done that, the Board is to review the Director on an annual basis. I think the last review is more than two years past due, you know, at this point, or two years old. Been more than two years, you know, since, since there's been a review. And so we certainly need to do one. But I feel like what we have here is a very generic thing, looking at the qualities and characteristics of the Director, without relevance to, you know, actual tangible accomplishments during the past twelve months. The narrative certainly gives us the opportunity to tie it to tangible accomplishments of the last twelve months. And, and so there's a benefit there in the narrative. But, you know, without some type of direction of, well, this is what we set out to do, and we accomplished it. You know, I may have a perspective of, we didn't accomplish anything because I had a different agenda than the Director of Schools did. So prior to an evaluation process, and hopefully that February twelfth meeting will allow us to, to really get that in place, that these are the things that the Board would like to see accomplished in twelve months. We come back after that, and we can evaluate, did we get the job done? You know, that, that seems really, really effective without that type of, of information, unless, you know, the Director could say, you know, here was the plan, and here was the accomplishment. Maybe it starts with a, you know, a, an evaluation. Now, all of that said, from the most junior perspective on the Board, you know, I don't have the years of experience of other members, you know, to draw from, and so I am. I'm looking at, you know, what were we striving to accomplish? Did we get it done?
Okay. So bottom line, I don't think I've caught your bottom line. You like this one, the other one, or neither?
My narrative's going to be six months long, you know, whereas other people's narrative is going to be four, six, eight years long.
Yeah. And that's, that's the primary reason we delayed this a little bit, was to give you at least that much.
I understand, but I think that that weights my narrative evaluation at a different level. It just does not give my narrative an equal weight. And so for that reason, I would probably prefer the more generic evaluation process. Yeah, I would, knowing no more than I do right now.
Okay. Wayne?
Well, when I came on the Board in oh-six, basically, I think we, we did it, what, in November at that time? So really, I didn't have the advantage of six months. So, you know, I hope that with the narrative, that, that it will give you the chance to, to, you know, to expound on the positives and, and give your opinion on, on what your perspective is. And so hopefully, the, the six-month will, will have been a plus over some Board members that, that only had two months. So, and, but I see your issue.
Opinion, opinion is another, is another part of it that I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with in the evaluation process. You know, the, the evaluation, you know, there's, there's a portion of it that's kind of empirical. You know, did we get the job done, or did we not? Do we have this characteristic in the workplace or not? You know, there's a certain truth that the criteria kind of holds you to, and say, you know, there's the question, answer the question, now you can editorialize. Each one of these has an area for comments underneath it. If we have, you know, just a broad brush perspective, the opportunity is there for a lot of opinion, you know, to come into play. And with all of that being public record, it certainly gives me pause and caution.
We can be fairly certain, no matter what you say on any evaluation, it's going to wind up in the newspaper. So just go into it knowing that. And nothing wrong with that. I mean, this is a public body doing public business. I'm not complaining about that, but just, that's going to be true either way we go. Donald?
Of course, I've, I've never been a fan of our evaluation system. The simplest form of evaluation to me is for this Board to sit at a table as a group. You have someone that writes down the comments, and that becomes the evaluation. You weigh those for each Board member. We do it in the, out in the public. You say what you need to say, you get what you, the results. He sees, and he understands where each one's coming from. I, I just like that kind of evaluation. I, I've never felt comfortable taking a piece of paper home with me and then sitting down in my chair and saying, now, what do I think about this, and giving him a score. I just, I just haven't felt comfortable with that. But I feel, I feel like that I would feel very comfortable sitting across the table from, to him or Wayne or anyone else, the entire group, and discussing, you know, this, this is part of the evaluation. Now, did we do what he's talking about? Did we accomplish this? And to what degree did we accomplish it? Are we satisfied with the results and how we accomplished it? You know? And those, I really have an in-depth discussion with it. The way we do it, and the way we've done it in the past, you know, it's, it's becomes a very personal thing instead of a board decision, in my, my opinion. And I would like to see, see us do it as, you know, kind of like what, a workshop day or something, and say, this is, this is Mr. Gill's evaluation, because he's Director of Schools, but this is the evaluation of the school system as the school board sees it. That's my point of view. Now, which one we do that's on the table, it, it really doesn't matter to me, because I'm not satisfied with either way.
Okay. So you want an oral exam, Wayne wants mult, Wayne wants essay.
Well, I may backtrack now. After hearing Donald, I kind of like to talk about a public forum, and, you know, I may, I may have to change my mind and, and support Donald's.
You know, the danger of that is we all sit around and look at each other, and wait for somebody else to say something.
I don't know. We're kind of a talkative bunch from time to time.
It depends on the topic.
That is the danger, since it is public forum and everything, no one wants to say the wrong thing or hurt someone's feelings or that type of thing. You know, all that comes into consideration. But, you know, do we do the same thing when we?
Perhaps. Yeah, we might. Other thoughts?
Mr. Gill, do you feel like the child sitting in the corner being talked about a little bit?
I'm still, I'm just processing all this.
All right, so we have three options. Old form, new form, oral discussion.
Mark, I will say, Mr. Chairman, pardon me, I'm Mark. I, I will say, I, I, until this evening, I have not, I've never looked at this instrument. So it's, it's far be it for me to say that it's not a particularly good one. But all things on balance, I would prefer to stay away from this type of a document as compared to what I've heard here before. I, I just think in, in some way, we have better ways to do it than, than go down. I've, I've evaluated teachers on a checklist and walked out of that evaluation and felt like I didn't do, accomplish anything. I mean, there, and I, frankly, I haven't done one in four and a half years now, so I don't know if the evaluation process is much different than it was last time I did one or not. But I've, I've been through those lists with teachers, and, and I sit across the desk with them, and then we, then we go through an oral evaluation, frankly, as I, as I discuss it with them in the summative. It's there. And, and a lot of those checkmarks, frankly, didn't mean much to me, and I don't think it did to them.
It certainly is true in either of the other two methods. You have a lot more room to focus on what you want to focus on and say it the way you want to say it. Terry and Grant, haven't heard from you. Do you want to weigh in?
For myself, I'm, I, I'd probably favor what Wayne's got here versus, I guess my only question is, if you do it as a group, you know, I may agree on something, and you may disagree on it. You know, how you going, what are you going, what kind of final decision you going to make? Or consensus, I guess. I know with evaluations I did on Mr. Gill before, I always discussed mine with, I, I guess other Board members probably have too, but, so I'm open. I, I, I'm more inclined to do the, do this form right here, this narrative deal. But I'll, I'll do whatever the Board wants to do.
Grant, do you have any thoughts?
Really doesn't make too much difference. I'll do whatever the group, you know, the majority of people want to do. But now, if we do have the public forum, obviously it'd be televised, and so sometime people feel a little bit intimidated by, by that, and it might be a little less candid than it would be otherwise. So, I mean, that's, that's true of almost everybody, whether you admit it or not, that's, you know, but, so I don't know if that, if that, that could cause some problems or some lack of participation otherwise would be.
How about this? We cogitate on it for two days and come to some sort of a conclusion on Thursday? Unless you're ready to make a conclusion now, I don't want to rush anybody into anything.
Dr. Burns, I'd want to say again, coming down to just four elements here in a narrative format, it, it once again really takes away the, the comprehensive look, you know, and allows for, you know, when you have a, I don't know how many-page document, because like Mr. Tackett, just took a look at this for the first time tonight, but when you have a comprehensive look, you undeniably have to look at those things which are strong and those things which are weak. When you only have four elements here, it's up to the person evaluating to consider, you know, whether or not I'm going to emphasize those things which are strong or emphasize those things which may be lacking. I think that there's wisdom in this comprehensive perspective that allows us to be able to go through the paces, step through the process. That's likely why we still do checklists for teachers, and maybe there's some camaraderie there that the Director of Schools has a, a similar instrument of evaluation as the teachers do, right, wrong, or indifferent.
I would say, I guess, if we do adopt the Wayne's model, what I would do is take this, flip through, look at the questions that are asked, and then address the ones I wanted to under each of these categories, so it wouldn't prevent you from being as detailed as you wanted. I mean, but I certainly understand your argument. Thursday night, shall we make a decision? Will it take two, a couple days and think about your preference? So it seems to me there are three options. The old form, the new method, or an oral discussion. Hopefully, let's do that. Everybody okay with the February fifteenth due date? Problems with that?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your problem?
I think the, you know, it's, it's just a matter of time management, but I'll have it done before the twelfth, you know, and whatever is, you know, comes from our rather important efforts on the twelfth, I mean, I'd almost like to see it due before the twelfth or, you know, a good week after the twelfth. For me, February twelfth is an important day, planning for the future.
Sure. This is really about the past year.
Understood. Then it's just a matter of me having it done before the twelfth. That's fine.
Any other thoughts on due date? Again, nothing magical about February fifteenth. It just seemed like enough time to do it without being so long that it gets pushed aside. So here are no objections. On Thursday night, it won't be a formal vote, but I'll poll you as to which of the options you prefer, and hopefully, one will get four votes. And if not, we'll, we'll.
Eventually it's going to some chairman or derogatory.
I sort of like that idea. So we'll decide on the method Thursday. February fifteenth will be the due date. If you wanted to complete it before then, you're certainly welcome to do that. Matt, we've all heard from Joyce and I about our February twelfth retreat. That is not primarily, or even, it's not designed as an evaluation of the Director. So that's one make, sure, I mean, that's, that will not be our agenda. Now, if you want to say something either way about Mr. Gill, you're more than welcome, but that's, the, the goal of that is to help us plan for the next year, two years, five years. That's the, the whole purpose of that. So I just want to keep that clear in everybody's mind.
And hopefully from that, then, we'll have some specific details.
Well, we could, you're right. I mean, logically, it would, once we set out our goals and we take a look in a year, a year down the road, how we done in achieving those goals, yeah. I mean, you're right, that would be a much, it would certainly be a much more achievement-driven model than this sort of an overall performance model.
Then you're back into the, the discussion that we have about, about evaluation of teachers being tied to performance and how, you know, how, how that totally can be. I mean, performance of the system can be great, and it may be in spite of the Director, or it may be poor in spite of the great moods. I mean, you know, I would, I'd be careful about making it too objective as opposed to having the allowance for some subjectivity in there. It, it is, you know, it, it's a tough animal. I mean, we, we discussed that at the School Board, the TSBA Day, you know, session. I, I was sort of, I mean, it's, it's a really difficult thing to do. We're dealing with evaluations of a person being tied to performance, and we're looking at that with teachers. And, and I don't know that we've come up with a model yet that, that can be totally performance-driven. It's got to be part of it, but I don't know that it can be all of it.
Just an observation, I'm pretty sure that if we weren't a high-performing district, the Director probably would get considerable amount of credit. And I would hope that since we are a high-performing district, he would get some of that credit,
Well, I mean, that's true. The Director gets the blame. You're saying you would like some of the credit. That seems, that seems fair enough. Other discussion topic?
Back on the snow thing, just for a second. I thought it was not ironic, but I thought it was unique that Friday, the two highest-performing systems in, in the mid-state were in school and everybody else was out. So, you know.
Anything else? If not, we'll stand adjourned, and we'll see you Thursday night.